Visual groups. Okay. Hi, everyone. We're just setting up here. We're this is the first time we've done the hybrid type of format. So we're just making sure that we can we can see people and make sure that we can understand who's there and how you how you get to participate. So just a second while we I can see. There are a couple of people with cameras on, but I can't see the multi multi screen. Interesting.
Oh, then maybe because the video is pinned. Eric, let me see.
I got it. I got it. Randy's on.
I'm here.
All right. There you go. See that?
Present.
And then I don't see Gabia. Perry and I are both on on our he's got his PC and I'm on my iPad so that we can see what's going on that you're all seeing so we can make sure. And Randy, just so you know that is official, I brought I brought my my thing along, but I get to upgrade with the real one. So.
You brought the cleaver?
I brought the cleaver.
Good. I like it. You'll have to use that over the next 10 years as your chairman of this commission at that.
Yeah, back by unpopular demand.
Oh, no, 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 we are. We we all we've all in spite of the Brown Act, just one on one, we just wanted to make sure you have 100% show of support to be in this until at least you're 80.
Yeah, okay. Well, that's yeah, that's good. Yeah, well, we'll we'll see. We'll see.
That wasn't a no, and it wasn't a yes.
I I wanted to make sure. Well, I'll wait until the meeting starts. We have a quorum, so we can go ahead and start. So Stephanie, or is everybody? Can everybody hear us? Raise your hand if you can hear us.
I don't see Steph at all, but she she must be there with you.
Yeah, she is here with us. She she's off camera for for many.
Oh, wow. Yeah, we know it's her.
I don't know. Yeah.
I'm here.
Yeah.
Just teasing you.
Yeah.
Ah. There you go. Wow. New furniture, new carpet. Is that? Wow.
Well, the the chairs are not new. That's why they're so low on the on the on the thing. If you if you're here, it looks like you're behind the bulletproof wall, but it's it's the cameras make it look like we have headroom above this, but looking straight out, your chin is is based here. The new chairs are on on order.
That is a terrible angle. It's too bad we can't get down further and then widen it a little bit.
Yeah, I think I think the cameras where the camera must be right up there somewhere.
Yeah.
I see it right there. It's right.
There you go. Okay, good.
Yeah, it's right. It's right in the it's right in the moon roof there.
Terrible, terrible. All right. You guys make it look great, but the angles is horrible.
All right. Are you ready to start, Stephanie? All right, then I make sure I've got my meeting things in order here. Let's go ahead and start with the roll call. I'll bring it. I'll bring the planning commission for April 27th to order, and we'll go ahead with roll call.
Thank you. Chair Lane.
Yes, here.
Commissioner Lamb.
Yes.
Commissioner Lerner.
Here.
Commissioner Nornsek.
Here.
I do not see Commissioner Konsey on the call. Commissioner Konsey, if you are on the call, if you could please let us know. Do not see here on the Zoom meeting.
All right, very good. So the next item is item two on the agenda is public comments, and this is the section where we take public comments for things that aren't on the agenda. Sometimes that brings forward an item that we need to know about or some feedback on something that's happened in the past, or at least or just informed us about something that the the committee wants us to know about. So I'll go ahead and open up the public comment for things that aren't on the agenda tonight. Go ahead and do that. I don't see anybody waving to come on, so we'll go ahead and close the public comment and bring it back for item number three, the approval of minutes. I didn't see anything in there.
I moved it. I didn't see a thing in there.
Yeah, I didn't see anything that needed to be changed at all. Moved and seconded moved and seconded. A roll call. We a roll call. We still want to take roll call because Randy's on the phone, right? So.
Chair Lane.
Yes.
Commissioner Lamb.
Yes.
Commissioner Lerner.
Yes.
Commissioner Nornsek.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, very good. The next part of the hearing is the public hearing portion, and we'll do the same approach on every item that we have. We will start with an overview from staff, and then we'll have questions from the commission, and then we'll open it up for public comment. We'll start the public comment with the with the applicant or their representative, and then we'll open it up for anyone that wants to have anything to say on the topic, then we'll close the public comment section and bring it back to the planning commission for discussion and action as appropriate. So with that, then we'll start with the item item number four A, which is a variance request on 70 Linden Avenue in Atherton, and we'll start with an overview. Ralph, are you on this one?
Yes, thank you, Chair Lane.
All right, very good. So we'll start with the staff report.
Pardon me. Ready for my. Okay, thank you. All right. So our first item is that 70 Linden Avenue. It is a 54,411 square foot or about one and a quarter acre lot at the corner of Linden Ave and Catelpa Drive. It's located in the R1A zoning district and surrounded by other low-density, single-family homes. Includes a 5,700 square foot residence that was completed in 2019. Now, as part of the proposal to build that residence, the applicant submitted for and was granted two variances in April 2014. The first was to allow a light well from the basement to encroach into the required side yard setback. The second was to allow for swimming pool to be located closer than normally allowed to the front and exterior side property lines. I'm going to pull up our site plan here, and so it's giving me moments to make sure that this all works correctly in our new format. Great. Okay, so here we see our site plan at the corner here. So we have Linden Ave on the bottom and Catelpa Drive to the right. So the proposed pool will be located 25 feet from Linden Avenue. Since this is a corner lot, accessory structures are typically required to meet the same side yard setback requirement as the main residence, which would be 50 feet in this case. The applicant, as I said, is proposing to locate the pool at 25 feet. Now, since 2014, the applicant has revised this slightly to reduce the length of the pool. That was done after consulting with the town arborist in that five-year span. Tree number one, which is in the bottom right corner there, has grown a bit and was the pool is going to encroach into the TPZs. So the applicant revised it and reduced the length also due to their new uses they intend to use a pool for. Okay.
This has previously been approved. Isn't that correct? I was on the commission.
Correct. Yeah. So both variances, yes, were approved in 2014, and then the applicant came back to us end of 2021, beginning in 2022 to construct the pool, and we advised from that point to reapply for the variance due to the length of time that had passed since then. So the applicant's letter request speaks to the required findings for the variance and notes the irregular shape of the lot and presence of heritage trees constraining the normally allowed area for accessory structures. You can see the TPZ zones for those trees and kind of the top portion of the lot here. Now, the letter also notes that landscape screening has been put in place as part of the construction of the residence, which will shield the excuse me, shield the proposed pool from the right of way. Locating the pool in this particular location instead of near the rear or other side property lines is advantageous, the applicant notes. As a result of the pool being further from neighboring properties, reducing noise and disturbance for neighboring property owners. The detention trench and storm drainage lines have already been installed per the plans that were approved in 2014 and completed in 2019. Now, the applicant stated in their letter that COVID-19 pandemic delays prevented the construction of the pool within the timeframe originally provided. As we noted, this variance was granted in 2014, and no action was taken within the required one-year time period. And as we know, COVID-19 began in 2020, so the applicant may want to speak more to the particular reasons for the delay, or the commission may want to ask them on the call as well. I believe I already mentioned the town arborist has reviewed this plans and no TPZ exceptions or heritage removals are required to accommodate the pool. And as noted, the applicant did revise the plans to accommodate the 10X TPZ for heritage tree. Now, to grant this variance, the planning commission must make four required findings contained in Atherton Municipal Code Section 17.16. Those findings are that there are special circumstances applicable to the property, including size, shape, topography, location, or surroundings, where the strict application of the zone entitled the price such property privileges enjoyed by other property owners in the vicinity and under identical land use zoning district classification. Staff finds that this finding can be met as a combined condition of the dimensions of the slot and the existing presence of heritage trees that encumber the normal area for accessory structures is unique in the town and could limit the property owner of privileges enjoyed by others. Second is that the granting of the variance does not constitute a special privilege inconsistent with the limitations upon other properties in the vicinity and zone in which such property is situated. Steph finds this can be met as a property would not be considered the granting of a special privilege inconsistent with other properties in the vicinity. And that due to the unique corner lot dimensions combined with location heritage trees restricting access to the allowable accessory structure building area, this condition can be met. Third is that the variance will not adversely affect the interest of the public or the interest of the residents and property owners in the vicinity of the premise in question. As we discussed, there is screening already in place to shield the pool from the right of way, and the location will also further it from neighboring properties. And last, that the granting of the variance is consistent with the objectives of the general plan and the zoning code. So one, as we mentioned, the initial variance was approved in 2014, and staff also finds this can be met as the project provides sufficient setbacks between properties, sufficient space for landscape screening, and is adequately set back from the public right of way. Notice of this application was sent to property orders within 500 feet. No public comment was received. Prior to the meeting tonight, the applicant may want to speak to what outreach they did to neighboring properties and what feedback they may have heard from the neighbors during the public hearing. That was all for you, and I you might turn back to the chair.
All right, very good. Any questions of staff before I open a public comment?
None for me.
All right, great. No questions. All right, good. I'll go ahead and open a public comment. Let's start with the applicant or their representative. Can you take that down? Thank you. You're on mute, Wendy.
Here we go.
There you go.
So I.
Go ahead and introduce yourself, just so we know.
Yep, sorry. Wendy De Senzo, owner, 70 Linden. My husband Chris is sitting in the background here. I wanted to speak originally to the delay. If you remember, a tree fell on the house.
Yes.
And we found ourselves in a situation where we are homeless in 2013. And so when we applied for the original variance and pool, I don't think we started construction until 2016.
Right. I watched the site.
Yeah, and the part of the problem was is we had to settle with our insurance company before we could even really demo demo the house. So that was the first hurdle we were up against, and then we were under construction for three years, and in our desire to wrap up the construction so we could make our neighbors a little bit happier, give them a reprieve, we separated the landscape from the building construction. And and I needed a breather. It was three years, six years out of our house. And and then COVID happened. And so we were up against then, you know, shelter in place. I'm a real estate investor owner in the city of San Francisco. You know, I proceeded to lose, you know, 100% of my tenants and had turnover and rent reductions, and so we just put everything on hold essentially.
All right. Well, thank you. All right. Any anything else?
I one other comment. Just to the I'm Chris. So the the reason that the pool is in the location that it was and why we applied back in 2014 is because that's where it was in the original house, and you might remember the original house had the same the same footprint on the lot, and so we wanted to try to keep that when we redid the house, and so that we wanted to keep the pool there, and it was important to get that variance for us to go forward with the design.
We wanted the house to kind of really represent what was originally here, you know, in likeness of. We love the house, and so and and Futong can speak to the design. He's our designer and representative here today.
All right. Yeah, that that's the thing on the I remember very clearly this house because it was so striking, and it had so much potential, and I know it was a and also you had a you had a world famous landscape architect that did the did the yard and everything too originally, right?
Yes, it was Thomas Church, and it was Douglas Staker Stone, which they're now trying to preserve a lot of his architecture. I think he did Sequoia High School or Hospital or something like that. So we're true modernists, and it was a family home.
Right. So you did a very good job on the on the rebuild of it because I went by it. I've been watching it because I like the I like that style. I live in one of a Nycler. And and so it came out much more authentic than I would that I dreamed it would come out when you had to rebuild it. So good.
Thank you. And I have to say that the prior owner came by who lived here for 30 years and just fell in love with the remodel. She said, we really did the prior house justice, and she's now since been back with her entire family many times.
Great, great. All right. Did you and you had somebody else on your team that wanted to talk?
Futong.
Yeah, and you're on mute, too. Go ahead and introduce yourself when you come up. There you go.
I'm Futong Chang. I'm the designer of the home.
Nice job, by the way. Very nice job.
Thank you so much. It was a work of love and mutual collaboration with Wendy, who is architecturally very sophisticated. So, yeah, we we tried to keep the building in the spirit of the old building, but come up with something new and timeless, hopefully. And the location of that pool was very much in keeping with the old house, and if you see the two views in your on the paper here, I don't know if you all have that.
Yes.
But you can see how I didn't even realize that the sort of opening there in the building has two two posts and is exactly what we did in that pool house area, and I had forgotten that those were there. But in any case, hopefully, what we've done and what we're doing is in keeping with what was there, which was so beautiful, and also that it you know, it meets all the requirements as as the as the planning committee seemed to support. So hopefully, this will get approved.
All right. Any anyone else to speak on this item? All right, then I'll go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission for discussion and action as appropriate.
I'm fine with that. Happy to make a motion.
Yeah, I'll just say that I'm so glad that the way it came out because I've been tracking it for for years, and when I had the dead spot there for a while, I was really worried it was going to come and become a two-story glass mansion, and I was so glad it stayed one story with the with the with the mid-century modern look, but I could tell that that touch up to make it more modern is very nicely done. And I'm going to remember your name if we ever need to redo our Nycler.
Yeah, we we're grateful for the house.
That's good.
We have done remodeled Nycler, by the way.
Thank you. No questions? No questions? All right.
Oh, I think it's a compelling discussion, and I think we're ready.
All right, Randy.
Happy to go. I moved that that planning commission approved the variance at 70 Linden Avenue based on the findings and subject to the conditions listed in the draft variance certificate to allow the side setback for an accessory structure slash swimming pool to be 25 feet for the reasons enumerated in the staff report and with the conditions stated in the variance certificate.
I'll second that.
All right, moved and seconded. We'll take a roll call.
Chair Lane.
Yes.
Commissioner Lamb.
Yes.
Commissioner Lerner.
Yes.
Commissioner Nornsek.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much. I'm welcome back, and I'm glad we're both are all still here.
So much. I really appreciate the consideration.
Yep. All right. We'll see you next time. Thank you. I'll keep watching it.
Next time for what?
The next time.
She's ready to go. Let her go.
All right.
Bye bye. All right, item item four B is for a variance in pre-protection zone exception for 183 Patricia Drive in Atherton, and we'll go ahead and start with the staff report. Ralph, are you on this one, too?
Yes.
We always get to be the tough ones, man. All right. That's good. Go for it.
Okay, keep things interesting for sure. I think Chair Lane. Yeah. So as mentioned, this application is for two items. First is the variance for the location of the garage, and second is for TPZ exceptions for three heritage trees. Let me just share the current site plan of what's existing. Great. So the subject site at 183 Patricia Drive is a 45,250 square foot or slightly over one acre.
Same map up, right?
Oh, pardon me. There we go. Thank you.
See, I just you're just trying to see if I'm paying attention, right? That's.
Absolutely.
It was the meat flavor.
Yeah. Go ahead.
The property is currently developed with an existing two-story main residence with a attached garage, pool pavilion, and detached studio. So here we see the site plan of the existing residence in the existing pool pavilion to be demolished. The applicant is proposing to build a new residence roughly on the same footprint as the existing house. As part of that development, the attached garage space would no longer be allocated towards that and would be used as living area, and the applicant is instead proposing to build a new detached garage. So initially, the applicant submitted an application for building permits and through planning for that garage and the residence. The residence, I believe, has essentially been approved by planning, but the initial application located the garage essentially in that same location as the existing pavilion. However, as you can see from the new current site plan, there are a number of redwood heritage trees along that boundary of the property. Most of those located in the neighboring property. So the existing pool pavilion area, if the garage was attached there, it would encroach significantly into the TPZ zones for those redwood trees on the neighboring property, less than six times the tree's diameter as generally preferred and and looked for by the the commission here. So as part of that, the applicant came in and discussed other options with planning staff and the town arborist, and that is where this alternative option of locating the garage further forward to remain at least six X away from those heritage trees came about. So accommodate that location, the applicant would need a variance to locate the garage with a reduced front yard setback. Normally, a detached accessory structure like a garage has to be at least 30 feet behind the front line of the main house or 120 feet from the front property line. Under this proposal, the garage, excuse me. Find my figures here. Under this proposal, the garage would only be located a few feet behind that frontline designation for the main house, so roughly 30 feet further front than is normally required. The town arborist reviewed the application and also approved three TPZ exceptions for three other heritage redwood trees. Now, in this diagram, you can see the TPZ exceptions that were granted at a staff level. Those are trees 14A, 16, and 19. The applicant is additionally requesting TPZ exceptions for trees 14B, 21, and 22. Those are all heritage redwood trees in port of fair form. And the resulting TPZ areas for those for 14B will be 6.5 times for proposed TPZ encroachment of 4.2% into the required protection area. For tree 21, the proposed TPZ is 6.4 times for an encroachment of 3.3% into the protection area. And for tree 22, the proposed inception is 6.7 times for a two and a half percent encroachment into the total protected area. Now, normally, the standard requirement is 10 times away or eight times with a staff exception. So going below that eight times threshold triggered the need for the planning commission application. The town arborist is on the call to discuss the trees in more detail. A arborist report was also submitted as part of the application that is included as attachment six, and the town arborist memo is included as attachment seven. Now, as we reviewed, we have a variance and a TPZ exception application. We just reviewed those requirements for a variance with the 70 Linden application, but I'll briefly summarize those again. So the first being that special circumstances applicable to the property, and the staff finds that due to the presence of heritage trees in this location, this reduces the allowable accessory building and structure area and limits the property owner of privileges that may be enjoyed by others. The second, the granting of various does not constitute a special privilege. The staff finds that this condition can be met because, as mentioned, the excuse me, the presence of the heritage trees restricting again that allowable accessory building area. The third is that the variance will not adversely affect the interest of the public or interest of the residents and property owners in the vicinity of the premise in question. Steph finds that the location will be adequately screened, screened both from the neighboring property and the public right of way. The attached garage will also meet other requirements as far as building height and side setback requirements. The applicant has also included as part of their submission a letter of support from the closest neighbor at 165 Patricia. And the fourth requirement that the variance is consistent with the objectives of the general plan and zoning code. We find this can be met. As mentioned, it provides sufficient side setbacks, sufficient space for landscape screening, and all other development standards are met. Now, to grant the TPZ exception that requires meeting the following finding, that it not be contrary to the purpose and intent of the general plan. So to review, there are found a result in a designated protection area sufficient large enough to protect both trees and the roots from disturbance and or damage. This is based on staff, excuse me, arborist report provided as well as the findings of the town arborist. And that the applicant is found to meet the criteria of the town's adopted heritage tree guidelines and standards document. Now, related to that, the town arborist has also included several conditions for the applicant to meet. Those are included in the town arborist memo as well as in the staff report. I'll summarize those briefly. Those are that the foundation for the proposed garage be excavated by hand while under project arbor supervision. Roots and counter will need to be cleanly cut using a handsaw. And then cut root ends are recommended to be covered and then properly watered from there to avoid any adverse effects to the tree. Now, I do also want to briefly speak, if you'll excuse me here. Oh, no, I believe I already covered that. So as mentioned, the applicant is on the call to answer any additional questions. The town also provided public notice to all adult neighbors within 500 feet and received no public comment. The applicant did provide one letter again from the nearest neighbor at 165 Patricia. Staff is available for any questions as well, and I yield my time back to the chair.
All right, good. So Sally, do you have anything to add to this? And can you can you pull the map down so we can see Sally?
Hello.
Hi.
Um, I don't really have anything to add. I just felt like this was the best location for the garage because of the existing way in the pool pavilion were located there. To put a garage on the other side of the house, you would have to have a whole new driveway, and then it would impact new trees. So rather than impacting new trees, I thought it was best to have it in this location.
All right, very good. And in the percent of of impact, you know, we talked about the six, 6.2 or 6.4 down from 10. The actual percent of of that impact is pretty small on each tree, right, as a percent of the overall circumference of the tree?
Yeah, so the 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 tree with the most impact was only 4.2%.
Yeah, so that's that's the other aspect of this. Yeah. All right, good. Any other questions of staff?
Nope.
Or comments? All right, good. Then I'll go ahead and okay, all right. So I'll go ahead and open up the public hearing, and we'll start with the applicant or the representative. Any update at this time?
Yes, hi, my name is Koi Lee from Lee Architecture on behalf of the homeowners. Thank you for your time on this. We've been working on this project for many, many months. And it is an existing two-story house, and we've tried many plan options on this to be least impactful on the site and also the tree without going two stories. And as Sally mentioned, with the and Ralph mentioned, we did meet with them to come up with this solution together. And one other thing, we did meet with the homeowners, 165 Patricia. I think they may be on the call, too. I'm not sure. But we walked them through the process and what we're doing, and they were very supportive and very happy that we reached out to them and spoke to them about this issue. That is all from our end.
All right, very good.
Great.
Any anyone else to speak on this topic? I don't see any waving hands or anything, so I'll go ahead and close the public hearing, bring it back to the commission for discussion and action as appropriate. This one's pretty straightforward. It's actually on the kitty corner of a of a home that we just approved here recently. You know, the triangle, they had the triangle. Oh, yeah. And it's gone. The house is gone. I went there and I went, shoot, that was just they just did that. It totally disappeared. But yeah, it went away quickly. But yeah, this one looks pretty straightforward to me. Any 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 comments?
No.
I'm fine with it.
All right, good. Then I'll go ahead and make the first motion then. I move I'll move the planning commission approve the variance at 183 Patricia Pace from the findings and subject to the conditions listed in the draft variance certificate to allow for the set setback. I move, I'll move the planning commission approve the variance at one eighty-three Patricia face from the findings of subject to the conditions listed in the draft variance certificate to allow for the sunset back of detached garage to be ninety-three feet minus six seventy-five inches. Is that what, or ninety-three feet, six seventy-five? Is that what it is? Ninety-three feet, six inches or six point seven?
Yes, and I should clarify that ninety-three feet is actually measured from the street. There is actually a, excuse me.
Yeah.
There isn't easement in the front property line. So excuse me, that should actually be measured from that easement. So we can make that amendment if you'd like.
Well, how much should it say? Because I was surprised by the ninety-three.
Yeah, so we should go with the, the front setback requirement, which again was to find it from my apologies here. Fifty-three. Hold on one second. Thank you.
It even says ninety-three point six oh five in the report.
Yes, and that is the, again, something that was pointed out after the report was
Okay.
published for us to correct. So again, apologies on that. Okay, so the actual setback we are going for will be two fifty-two feet, six inches.
All right, thank you. The detached garage should be fifty-two feet, what, six inches?
Six inches.
Fifty-two feet, six inches for reasons enumerated in the staff report and with the condition stated in the variant certificate. And then we have a minute to reflect that we corrected the, the these, the designation on the feet. All right.
Through the chair, may I also recommend that the motion be extended to carry the distance revision to carry through attachment one variant certificate.
Yes, absolutely, absolutely. I was wondering if there was more that I need to make that adjustment to. Good, good thing. All right. So does that make, does that clear to all staff? Okay, good.
I would second it, but I don't even know what I would second.
You know, I'm so glad you made the meeting, man. Is there anybody that actually knows what I was talking about?
Thank you for taking the lead on that.
No, what it is, is that in a report, it was the actual long footage was in there.
I know, I know. I'm just teasing, I'm just teasing.
All right, I need a second, second. Very seconds. All right, then I gave up on you, Randy.
Be the first person.
All right, then go ahead and let's do a roll call on that.
Thank you, Chair Lane.
Yes.
Commissioner Lamb.
Yes.
Commissioner Lerner.
Yes.
Commissioner Narnsick.
Yes.
Thank you.
And that we should go on record that Mr. Lamb actually did know what he was voting for.
Yes, I did. I, I just, I was just trying to make sure we knew the exact setback.
Good. All right, then I needed second motion. On the, I'll do that too, I guess. I moved the planning commission, find the exception of the tree protection zone TPZ for the three heritage trees, trees number fourteen B. At, and all these numbers are correct, right?
Correct.
A forty-seven point three inch redwood to six point five times the tree diameter and tree number twenty-one, a thirty-eight, thirty-eight inch redwood to six point four times the diameter and tree number twenty-two, a forty-four inch redwood to six point seven times associated with the construction of the proposed detached accessory buildings that I garage in this case at one eighty-three Patricia Drive, not to be contrary to the purpose or the intent of the general plan for reasons outlined in the staff report. And the commission approved the TPZ exception subject to the conditions as listed in the draft TPZ exception permit. And there's no revision to that permit required, right?
Uh, no.
Very good. That's a, there's, there's a motion. Do I have a second, second? Moved and seconded. Roll call please.
Chair Lane.
Yes.
Commissioner Lamb.
Yes.
Commissioner Lerner.
Yes.
Commissioner Narnsick.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, now item four C, the applicant came back with a slight change to it, and that's why we, that's why they asked for, or we asked them to continue it while we straightened that out. It's like, correct, bro. Item four C.
Uh, yes, so the applicant did, had made some late revisions and was not able to revise their entire plan essentially prior to us publishing the staff report. So we connected with them and they are in support of continuing to May twenty-fifth.
All right, good. So I need a motion to continue to May twenty-fifth. So moved. All right, there's a moved and
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Roll call please.
Chair Lane.
Yes.
Commissioner Lamb.
Yes.
Commissioner Lerner.
Yes.
Commissioner Narnsick.
Yes. All right, very good. Then item number five is staff reports and, and these are just to be informative type updates for things that are coming and also give us an overview on the topic. Is that correct?
Yes, so item five A on the agenda is an item of discussion in which staff will be making a brief presentation and would appreciate discussion and ultimately any direction that the commission may give to staff in bringing this item back at a future meeting.
All right, and just for anyone who's watching, there's, there's no action on this except to maybe direct staff for more, more study or more, more thinking about how, how the item would move forward. When it came back to us, there could be an opportunity for the, the, the commission to be asked for some kind of action. But right now, this is just a basically a, a brief, a public study session in a sense. Going over, it's got actually an overview of the topic.
That's correct. So no request for any action is being made tonight. Simply a discussion by the commission as well as, of course, taking any public comment on the item and ultimately any direction that the commission may wish to give to staff in bringing this item back at a future public meeting.
All right, good. Then I'll go ahead and open up the public hearing after we have the RV.
Thank you. So Stephanie Davis, principal planner. Tonight, staff is bringing for you again for discussion and feedback the topic of considering amendments to the town's existing landscape screening ordinance. So let me begin first with an overview of what the existing landscape screening ordinance does and does not cover. First, the ordinance does apply to all new construction as well as to additions at certain heights and distances from property lines. It requires all yards to be screened except front yards that are contiguous to a public street. Screening requirements can be met through a combination of ways. They can be met through existing landscaping on a subject site, through proposed landscaping on that subject site and/or through existing landscaping on an adjacent property. This determination is made by the town arborist. What, what it also does is it prescribes at all new trees to be planted as part of a landscape screening plan be twenty-four gallon in size and that shrubs to be planted be a minimum of fifteen gallon in size. It also gives final quantity, quantity, size and species a lot of discretion to the town arborist in the ultimate approval of a proposed landscaping plan. What the requirements do not do is that they do not distinguish between a flat and a sloped lot in town. They do not prescribe specific species to be planted, either trees and or shrubs. They do not provide specificity on the locations of the plantings. And they also do not take into account specifically the location of any new landscaping to be planted relative to any existing trees, tree protection zone or TPZ. So why are we here? The issue of evaluating the landscape screening ordinance was originally brought to the attention of staff back in two thousand and nineteen and was limited just to the concern of the adequacy of the landscape screening requirements relative to screening of buildings and structures on hillside lots. Specifically, the ability for a upsloped building on a higher slope to be adequately screened from its downsloped neighbor. In two thousand and twenty-one, the topic was discussed in a study session format by both the planning commission. And then subsequently, the council, in which the council directed staff to go ahead and start preparing some revisions to the ordinance to address those, that issue. Following those study sessions as staff, planning and the town arborist began developing actual draft amended language to the ordinance relative against specific just to hillside lots. The town arborist did note a few other additional topics of concern that she notes while implementing the ordinance over the course of the last several years. So as the conversation grew, staff brought the item back to the city council for a further study session discussion on these additional topics. These topics, in addition to the original topic of screening on hillside lots, is what staff is asking the commission tonight to discuss and provide further direction upon and take any public comment. Ultimately, what staff is looking for is to take the direction received tonight, incorporate it into a revised draft landscape screening ordinance and bring it back as a formal public hearing item to the commission with the request to review and provide a recommendation to the city council. So I'll go through all of the topics that staff is evaluating and asking for discussion and direction upon relative to possible amendments to the landscape screen ordinance. So beyond the hillside screening issue that I met previously mentioned, the additional topics include specificity on planting types and sizes as part of a required landscape plan. Addressing towers or architectural projections, which I again will be discussing in more detail momentarily, as well as a screening of detached accessory dwelling units or ADUs. So staff has prepared a draft revised ordinance in tract changes. Just as a starting point for discussion, this is included as an attachment to your staff report. It addresses each of the four topics that I just mentioned. But I'll briefly go over each one in a bit more detail. We'll start with the hillside screening as that was the original topic at hand. So the issue identified here was again, the ability to adequately screen primarily detached buildings and structures that could be situated ten feet from a side or rear property line and to a neighboring building.
Stephanie, sir, is there, do you have a red line that we can show?
Yeah, we could. It's attachment one, excuse me, Ralph, to the staff report. Thank you.
It's easier for the staff, for the people online to see.
So just a summary of the issue. Depending on the actual topographic differences between two properties, how steep the difference is. Such detached building could appear much taller than it actually constructed as. So as such, staff is recommending, you can see up towards the top of the screen there under section seventeen point five point zero seven zero and then followed by seventeen point five zero point zero eight zero. All the new text is shown in blue. And what we are proposing is to create more distinction in terms of requirements for hillside lots versus non-hillside lots. And I'll talk about that in a moment here. So the recommendation with the language in the draft ordinance would require landscape screening plans to certify the subject sites average, average cross slope. And if such certified average cross slope is fifteen percent or greater, ultimately would require larger trees at minimum heights to be planted in the attempt again to help mitigate that more apparent bulk and mass from a downslope neighbor. And the second topic regarding planting species and sizes. Recommendations have been made again within this attachment that include requiring larger tree and shrub sizes both for hillside lots and for non-hillside lots, all larger than what the existing ordinance otherwise requires. So while no language on specific planting species is included in this attachment, reason being was there was some concern of staff on dictating the type of plantings leading itself into a approach of more dictation on the overall architectural style. As we find most landscape plans that are submitted to the town do tie in or attempt to tie in aesthetically to the overall design of the home. And since there's no design review in Atherton, staff felt that prescribing specific planting types may have be considered inconsistent with that policy approach. Similarly, there was also concern if we were to propose to outline certain species to be planted, that such species could be overtaken by pests and or disease sometime in the future. And that could lead to a community-wide decrease in overall landscaping if there was just a few species, for example, that were planted throughout town.
Yeah, go ahead. Question?
I, I have a comment on that paragraph we're discussing. I think there's a typo here. I don't know if that's important. But it says it does, it also does include any requirements for some or all plants to be native California and so forth. Is the word not omitted after does? Should it say it also does not include any requirements? Because it goes on in that sentence to say nor does it provide any details on prohibited tree species. So the implication to me is it should say not.
This is on the first part where you're talking about the differences of what's not covered. It's in that section.
In the staff report.
Right, in the staff report.
Sure. Yeah, let me go back and
Yeah, so she's not addressing that right now. She's addressing the, the actual recommendations.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. I thought All right, we'll do that another time.
The other component related to a recommendation or in this case, not recommending specific species to be planted has to do with the use of California native and or drought tolerant species. Again, without prescribing specific species, however, there was council sentiment that we would want to try and encourage such species to be planted where appropriate. So language has been added into the ordinance as a recommendation to strongly encourage such plantings if deemed appropriate, but not mandating such species.
Did you look at excluding some species?
Yes, and that's where I'm going next.
Okay.
And additionally, you can see here on the screen, it's item D. Staff is recommending a specific to trees, not shrubs, but for trees, including a list of prohibited trees to be planted. This is an attempt to be internally consistent with the town's existing heritage tree ordinance in a totally different section of the municipal code. But for internal consistency, these eight trees that you see here noted are all trees that are prohibited to be planted. When a heritage tree is removed, one needs to be replaced. None of these trees are allowed to be proposed as replacement trees. So again, we are recommending that that be carried over into this ordinance as well. So the third topic has to do with adding landscape screening regulations to address tower elements or architectural projections. So just a really brief explanation of what those are. The zoning ordinance for the R one A and R one B zoning districts do allow what we call towers or architectural projections, both on the main residence as well as detached buildings. And what those are, I would like to describe as minimal square footage area pop-ups. They go taller than the overall height of the subject building. As such, they can look taller and become more prominent aesthetically. And for those reasons, their staff is recommending that language be added to try and help better screen these massive, massing areas by having additional landscape screening requirements specific just to those, I'm going to use the term towers. That again, that would be in addition to the base landscape screening applicable to the property. The difference is that the additional landscape screening that staff is recommending for these tower type elements be planted inwards towards the lot and situated at such a location that makes sense positionally to help screen wherever that tower element may be projecting from, from again, either the main residence or the detached building. And lastly, on that note, minimum sizes have been prescribed in the requirements of the screening for those tower elements. So if you have a tower element, you would have your basic landscape screening requirements applicable to the entire property as well as this additional tier of landscape screening focused more specifically just in the tower area. And so the last topic pertains to the issue of attempting to screen detached accessory dwelling units and particularly those detached ADUs, as we call them, that are located only four feet from a shared property line as is allowed by state code. The council talked about this one a fair amount too. They also identified, as has been vetted by our town arborist, the challenges of trying to screen a building that is only four feet from a property line, and in most cases, almost all cases, a fence, either constructed of wood and/or concrete. Just that limited space itself, in addition to avoiding any infrastructure or property line issues, has been found to be very challenging by the town arborist to find an appropriate type of species that won't ruin things and/or will adequately screen such building. In addition to that, we conferred with the Menlo Park Fire Department because we are aware that there are some state fire codes that are currently being drafted and are anticipated to become effective in 2023, I believe. I'd have to go back and check the actual date with the fire marshal. And one of those amendments is the prohibition of planting any type of combustible material, any type of tree and/or plant, five feet from any building. So that in and of itself is another problematic issue that we're facing when you have this limited space of four feet from a property line. So while we acknowledge the issue of attempting to help try to screen ADUs, one topic that got brought up by the council for further evaluation is potentially allowing taller fence heights along the lineal distance of ADUs that are only four feet. Staff does not find that discussion to necessarily be appropriate in the landscape screening ordinance. And so for the sake of trying to focus the discussion on landscape screening ordinance, has not proposed any recommendations to the landscape screening ordinance specific to detached ADUs at only four feet. We do anticipate some revisions to the fence ordinance coming back to both the commission and the council soon, within the next few months, unrelated to landscape screening, but would maybe an appropriate time to have that conversation.
Did you consider the concept of the option of the neighbor accepting screening on their property? So that was an option that I actually, we actually looked at with a neighbor that didn't have a lot of space and they wanted to screen it. They didn't end up doing that, but they were going to pay for the screening to be on our side because we had more space.
So we certainly could incorporate that and address that in a revised ordinance to bring back to the commission. Sally, you had some comments on that because the council brought that idea up as well. And I can't recall where that discussion, if there was any kind of conclusion or resolution to it. There might have been a bit of concern from the town attorneys in having that vetted within code, having the town require landscaping on a separate piece of property.
Yeah, I wouldn't put it in as a requirement, but as an option. One option is, would be to, and then it would be among the, or between the neighbors to agree to that. But if it's not brought up, it's never thought of. And in a lot of situations where somebody's putting it four feet away from a backyard, for example, and that person has a lot of space in their backyard, they could put it on their side. And, but anyway, that, just as long as you've touched on it in your discussion, that's all I wanted to do. And the, go ahead, go ahead and finish, because I have some questions.
So that was the conclusion of my presentation. Just really focusing on the four topics of concern that have been discussed over the course now of the last two years related to the town's existing landscape screening ordinance. And just for the sake of the commission and anybody who's listening, those four topics were focused specifically on adequate screening on hillside properties for detached accessory buildings and structures, providing specificity on planting species and/or sizes, adding in new applicability to the landscape screening ordinance specific to architectural projections or towers on main buildings or detached buildings. And then lastly, ideas brainstorming on how to address detached ADUs that are only four feet from a side or rear property line.
All right. Questions? Go ahead. So Stephanie, I recall that when this issue came up, we had some people come by with pictures of bare walls, especially along Atherton Avenue and other places. And there was, someone came to us and said, "Well, you know, this is kind of ugly just having a wall in the street." And I note that in seventeen dot five zero dot zero three zero A, it says, "Front yards contiguous to a street shall not require landscape screening." So am I right that that exception, and so paragraph A means that you could have these, you know, ugly bare walls, if you will, along the, along the right-of-way's?
So there is no requirement to screen a wall at the front that's contiguous to a front line. However, as a matter of practice, we did evaluate this and look, and I'm sure Sally can probably speak to this more specifically. The majority of front yard walls and/or fences that are constructed do indeed have some type of landscaping associated with them. The instance of the blank bare wall right at the property line with zero landscaping has not been found to be overwhelmingly persistent throughout the town, nor has the town staff received any complaints beyond. There was the one that came into the commission. This was, I can't remember the year, but I know it was several years ago. Because it hasn't been demonstrated as a prevalent issue throughout town, at least brought to the attention of staff, we are not recommending any changes to add the addition of landscape screening along the front. The other concern is that most folks also do plant fairly close to the property line. And so they would need to obtain an encroachment permit to put their own plants within the public right-of-way. And that was also an issue that posed some challenges, or at least to think more on how that would be best addressed.
So there might be a way to put some terminology in there of something to the effect of using, when it talks about the front, the front access or the front visibility, something to the effect of wherever appropriate, it's to put in something to the effect of screening should soften the look of a solid wall or something like that as a thought within the ordinance to bring up. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
And then, and then making sure that it doesn't encroach on public property and things like that. So you get the things where people aren't taking that as an excuse to take away parking spaces in front of the house. And, but it's still bringing it up as something that we were encouraging. It's almost like a design encouragement, but not an ordinance requiring. Or implementation encouragement, but not a requirement.
Sure. And I understand the direction being given. I'm thinking if, as I mentioned, we will be bringing back the fence ordinance.
So maybe that goes on there.
May be most appropriate to put such recommended language in that ordinance.
Right.
So that those who are building fences or walls are going to look more than likely to the fence ordinance first. And so if that language was tied into height, location, other development standards, less likely to be missed.
Yeah. However, you would blend it, but I think the point was brought up at the committee, at the commission meeting some time ago. But it is worth addressing because and the way it will become a more prevalent issue is what we get into lot divisions. And then people will want more privacy on smaller lots, which means more walls very often. And then it gets to be more of a, more of an ongoing developing issue. And also, if there is a multi-unit property of some kind, then that would be another sort of, you know, gated community kind of look that might be just like, you know, some kind of a, some kind of a moat type of thing. All right. So I think, I think part of the thing we have to think about this is not only in terms of of the way our developments work now, but what the impact could be with a change in the development style, with higher density. And we'll talk about that next because some of the discussion I had there. The other thing is, just from a standpoint of, so I've been involved with hillside ordinance productions before, which are more complex than this. But it dealt with not only with landscaping issues, but also with the angle of view off a hill. So we did it, you know, it requires setbacks off. So we'd do, it would take the angle of the side of a hill and draw a line up and then say, okay, if the building falls into that angle, then you have to push it back away from the edge of the hill. So it made it, so it wasn't imposing. Now, on some lots, that's doable, and other lots it's not. But there are more ways to mitigate than just landscape screening. So, you know, things like height limitations on a property and things like that. We start trickling down a design issue with that. But if you're, but it's worth thinking through what would be acceptable. It's not a design criteria, but is a impact criteria for a neighbor. Particularly when you look at a two-story home that goes from a English Tudor to a modern with glass all over the outside with their lights on on the ceiling glowing down on the property below, which is a very common model these days. And so they go from no light pollution to all light pollution. And, and yes, it's mitigated, but it's mitigated on the first floor, but not on the top. So there's, so it goes back to what the sort of growing architectural trend is relative to the impact that it has. I don't know how much of that we can address. But if, to the fact that we know that it would be coming, it's just something to think about. And I don't know, it's certainly not addressed in here because this is landscaping. But it's the overall idea of what type of impact mitigation is appropriate. And maybe none of it is.
I mean, I can speak from experiences in implementing hillside. Usually they're like a hillside overlay district. You're on top of whatever the base zoning is, at least based on my experiences. And those development regulations carry through everything, not just landscape screening, lighting, height setbacks, the whole gamut.
Right. They're very complex. And it worked well, particularly in an area kind of like the Oakland Hills where you're looking up. And all of a sudden, if you, or if you go to Pacifica, they're all along the edge of the hill and you see them. And you go to the Oakland Hills, they're back away and you can just see the rooftops diagonally. And we did some things over in Contra Costa County when I was on the board that deliberately went to mitigate and included landscaping and setback. And I drive by it now and I go like, that was, that was the right way to develop it. People didn't lose anything in their homes, but it changed the, it changed the look of the, of the area dramatically by thinking through that.
Good point.
They can be quite complex. And it's, I should say setbacks and step backs.
Yes.
Relative to various angles.
Right. It can drive architectural choice rather than a box of two-story. It's a two-story with a setback on the second story so that the angle is. Anyway, you're aware of all that. And, and so to the degree that that might be something else to be looking at other than just fencing and things like that. Again, this goes back to if you get an architectural change or a site change. So if you take a five-acre or a two-acre lot and split it in two, or a one-acre lot on the top of a hill and split it in two, then you have two boxes on the top of the hill looking down into somebody's backyard. So it's just another thing that in terms of when we're planning, when we're planning at this time with all the potential changes, the planning can't be around Atherton as we know it, but Atherton as it might be directed to be. Which is, you know, they call that, they call that planning. All right. All right. Randy, you have anything else on that?
No, I'm good. That's great. Thank you. We definitely missed the hillside one. I will say that.
Good to discuss all that.
Yeah. All right. So from direction.
Hey, 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 hey.
Randy was voting. Is that what he was doing? All right. So, so what I'll, what I'll say then is, from a direction standpoint, you've heard our discussion. Out of that, you can formulate some concepts. But it's also worthwhile thinking through other areas of impact. And if the category is landscaping, then that heads that is one thing. If that category is mitigation, and landscaping is a, is a component of that, that's something else. So just, and dialing in the changes to lot size potential, it is, it could be a big issue. Or not.
Great.
Yeah. All right. Okay. Go ahead and open up a public comment. Is there anyone online to speak on this item? Or has an idea? Go ahead. Come up to the microphone. Go ahead for the record. All right. Go ahead. Introduce yourself for the record.
My name is Sam Lerner. The way this commission here has nothing to do with what I'm going to say. And I'm a 35-year resident of Atherton. And I've watched a walk-a-lot, and I've watched the area. I've watched, I've watched the home. And I must say, my observation is that the role of the planning commission over the past 35 years has definitely been better and better. And I think that must connect with the mission that I just see coming. Protecting the wealth of all creatures, both animal and professional. And allowing for owner's rights. I wanted to make a couple of comments. One, I often hear a general comment that the neighbor next door says it's okay. Well, here's a caveat here. What about the next neighbor there?
Yeah.
And we have to think about the welfare in general.
Right.
The other thing, when we get to this, the plants. I'm watching English florals going up all over town. Next door to us, there's a 12,000 square foot home going in. And that's what Pacific grew, which I think is the premier builder in this town. And they planted roughly 180 to 200 English florals. And he planted some area on our side.
All right, good.
And Brad Smith came over and said, "You want to see more trees?" But you know, you know, it's a really great town. Beautiful water. And so when you talk about specific species, we thought about thinking about water conservation. English florals are big water lovers. And they're going up all over town. That's one point, that one thing. For the long run. The Western United States is in a 20-year drought. California has had a 100-year drought when you go way back. We may be in one right now.
Right.
The other thing, Eric, you mentioned when it came to screening walls and all that, that we have to watch out for parking spaces as well. This is way in the back of my mind. And if you like here. The, you don't have to allow for parking. You can plant low plants up to about two or three feet from the end of your right-of-way to leave a water.
Right.
Correct?
Yes.
You don't have to, you can have low, and some of the beautiful, there's lawns out there. And there's trees and all sorts of things. They really beautify our town. And I really agree with what Eric is saying here. We've got to do something. The ordinance is about screening these walls.
Right.
Because there again, it's for the welfare of everyone. They have a beautiful town in private eye and see it. And we were here 35 years ago, and there were literally no concrete walls. They were all green.
Yeah.
We still have the green walls.
So do we.
And so I like the Lindenwood area has a lot more open space, green walls. Really have a lot more space than that. It's turning into a family ball, but they're really beautifying.
Right.
So really, the whole reason I came up here, I just thought I wanted to be the first one. I'll say I was the first public speaker in the inaugural of the new building.
You're on the record.
You know, when she retires, I'll take it.
Very good. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you for asking her. Thank you for waiting, too. All right. Anyone else? Anyone else? I haven't seen any, anybody waving their hands. So I'm going to go ahead and close the public comment section. And you have the direction you need or the input you need, not direction necessarily. But just, we'll be thinking about all this stuff. Now, the next item is item 5B, the housing element update. So last night, there was a meeting of the housing element update over at the park. And, you know, Ralph. And, you know, Ralph and I were there and there were there were two other council council people there. And Lisa was there. And and it was probably sixty or seventy people there at the.
Yeah, about sixty by my count, yeah.
Yeah, so there and there there we went over what the process would be for this discussion about the housing element. That's being directed where every eight years, I guess it is, that we have to come up with a new housing element. The housing element is basically the strategic plan, I would refer to it as, for housing. The the direction of development in the in the town. And every every community in California is required to submit this this plan every eight years. And that means we're all on different cycles. One other thing that's going on that we discussed yesterday. Was the idea that this one, this plan is going to be more rigorously reviewed and more rigorously. I would say. Watched and adjudicated than ever before. So in the in the past, way back in the day, you put a plan up, you'd miss it and you're like, oh, we'll try better next year. And then it got a little bit tougher. It was like, hey, well, we got a plan. Oh, we missed it. Shoot, we better make these adjustments. Now, there's a there's a new body that's been put in place that is basically an enforcing team that's going to go around and say. Okay, you missed this this plan target for the last three years. Tell us how you catch up. And if we don't agree you're going to do it, then we'll help you by taking over control of your direction. So this one's much more, much more going to make it happen than we've ever seen before. At least that's the way it's starting out now. Though the plan process that we discussed yesterday was basically there's what eighty, they say eighty. Towns that had already gone through the process of submitting their housing element update to the state. Of those eighty, four were accepted as as adequate. So seventy six towns in California, mostly in Southern California, I guess, right now, based on their cycle, have not complied. So supposedly there's, you get two chances to to comply. And then they're threatening to come in and help by taking whatever regulations you have and just making their own, making their own and enforcing. So the the objective, so the first objective of this process is get get accepted by the state. Get your plan accepted by the state. Then from that point on is really make the plan work. So one of the, so I I don't know if you all saw that Joe George, Brother Brothers City, city manager. Sent an email out to us all, I think we all received it, summarizing the meeting last night. And I thought he did a good job. It was, it was, and it was, he talked about, it's clear that some education is clear. There there were people that, most people had received the notification, everybody has sent a notification, a couple of people didn't know they received it. And and were surprised by it and a neighbor told them. So that's all, that's always going to happen, but you know, this one was blanketed and blanketed and blanketed. So they'll continue to do that. There was, there were some people in the community that wanted, that considered the idea of an ADU or JDU a good thing for them. There were a couple of people that even spoke about the fact that, you know, they were they were thinking about leaving the town. But if they had the ability to have an ADU and a renter and things like that, they go for it. There were other people in the room that said, you know, it'd be nice to have this kind of housing. So we could have teachers and fire people and policemen and people like that live in the community or service workers to people who live in the community. There was a lot of concern by a couple of couple of individuals about where these new overlays of higher density would be put.
Yeah.
The 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 council members. Talked about the fact that there were, there were a bunch of plans that the staff was told to. Basically come forward with a a bunch of different views of what the possibilities were. And one of them, one of the views was a thousand parcels in town would be designated as potential for. And so it and so it'd be like, okay, this could be divided up, this could be divided up, that could be divided up. And then they came down to a group of, what is it, twelve properties, I guess?
Eleven currently, yes.
Currently, that that basically are along Marsh Road and on Bay Road and one other area.
One on Oakwood Boulevard.
Okay. And and they're and they would be eligible for higher density, right up to ten per acre or something like that.
Yes, so ten for the Bay Road and Marsh Road properties and up to twenty for the Oakwood Boulevard property.
And from that, one individual come up and said, I can't believe you're going to turn Lindenwood into high density. But they didn't know it was just the Bay Road and just the parks, that just the lots were facing bay and they don't even go back through Lindenwood. But technically, it's Lindenwood. So there was, it goes back to the idea of understanding that, you know, what was being proposed as to whatever was messaged in the community. There was also some concern around the design that might come out of something like this. And there were there were sort of the samples of different ways it would look. And some of the pictures that were shown were like from areas in unincorporated River City or whatever. That kind of scared people because it was not the kind of architectural quality that maybe people would have thought. So there was, so the setup, by the way, was an overview by the mayor. And and then and then tables set up with an overview of the plan and and different, different aspects. At four, four or five different tables with different aspects of the of the plan to review. And also there's sort of dot voting on, would you rather do this or that? And so everyone sort of milled around and 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 staff members and I and I were asked questions about about different aspects of it. People, so it was more of a mingle. And then at the end of a period of time, about an hour or so, then people got got up and were allowed to speak in a public setting. George points out, this probably wasn't rigorous enough of getting, it's it's the first one. So what will happen other, another time will be people have an open mic and they they just came up and say what they think about proposals. As the proposal firms up. And that way it'll go on record, so the state has a record that, but we in fact got input from the community. There was a lot of concern. There was a lot of concern of a lot of questions like why are we, of course, this one individual got up and said. I I really don't understand what problem we're solving or something to that. What question are we asking? You know, he said, we got a solution with it, but it's not clear what the question is. So it was, it goes back to anytime you're doing this fundamental change to the to a plan. There's a lot of catching up to do and a lot of people who haven't been involved for the first time will will be involved. And then a lot of people won't be involved until they see it for the first time. The first time a a property has has more than two units on it, everybody's going to, first time a property is split and two duplexes go in.
Yeah.
There'll be a lot of interest. First time a property is designated as ten units and they start seeing construction of ten units. Interest will skyrocket. So this process is going to be a multi-year discovery process of what it really means to solve the. Solve solve the proposed plan that the state has put out. Stephanie, Ralph, you have anything on that? Ralph was there, what what did you pick up to, Ralph?
Yes, I just add as far as the. I thought it was really valuable that people had an opportunity to address questions, but also a lot of kind of misconceptions that people are floating out there. So when we talked about the townhouse overlay zones, you know, I had people come with me, obviously, there are people who thought we were talking about. All of Lindenwood getting rezoned, which obviously not the case, it's just a limited number of properties. We had people who were on a list of considered properties who were asking me, oh, what are they going to, you know? Is my property going to be taken away and multifamily put a house in, you know, which obviously none of that is happening. But to be there and address those concerns was was certainly helpful. Some elements like ADUs and SB nine lot splits, which are already, you know, we have ordinances adopted, they're already in place by state law. Those are things that are happening and are kind of happening, you know, in addition to the housing elements. So getting people to understand what is more specific to the housing element itself and what are kind of the the aspects of it that are up for discussion. Versus again, things like SB nine or ADUs, which are in place and are happening in the town. I thought that was certainly helpful. And then, yeah, and then obviously, of course, having yourself and council members there, a couple of staff members, I think was really helpful. And, you know, I think going forward, obviously, we know there's immense interest in housing. So I think we'll try to be a little more robust staff presence, these types of things certainly. But I think a lot of helpful feedback and, yeah, May eighteenth, we're targeting for a city council for them to review a draft housing element. So we will see what kind of, you know, crowd we maybe get here on that night. And hopefully by June, we can get something draft wise submitted to the state feedback.
Yeah, and and well, this is a, this is a multi, multi-year process, obviously. It's a, what what's the date for the actual plan to be submitted? Do we know?
Was out there. Yes, so we're planning to submit the final in November. So the timeline is discuss the draft in May, submit a draft to the state in June, receive feedback by September. And then take October to, you know, make amendments, submit by November and have it approved by January.
Yeah, so so by that, so one of the advantages of of are being. Basically a New Year's gift to the to the state. Is we will see what happens to a lot of communities going through the process and we'll basically will be able to benchmark when it is successful. And that'll help us in our in our process. It also may reshape the the state's opinion about what it wants to accept. So if, you know, if five hundred communities submit and fifteen get accepted. Then is it, is it the community that is the issue or is it the acceptance process the issue? So at some point, the statistics will tell whatever happens that may impact it or may firm it up and say, okay, I don't care what you guys think. We're going to take over your town. So, you know, we're we're not sure right now which way it'll, which way it'll go out in those communities. But our objective is to come up with a plan that we believe that can be successful. That will be, it will retain the quality of life in the in the town and still be compliant. Does that cover what we that we think here, staff members?
Ah, yes, I think that pretty well covers it.
There are also pending legal challenges, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
This all could be moot. Yeah, right, it could be. Apparently, the SB, the SB ten or the SB nine or repeal. Memorandum or whatever it is, did not get the signatures required, so that's not going to happen in this first round. But, you know, that that goes back to, you've got enough of these community meetings going on and people will all start understanding. SB nine is nothing right now for many people because it doesn't happen. The first time that somebody has a five acre property next to, all of a sudden, a two, a one acre property split in two, interest level goes up.
Yeah.
So. Randy, do you have anything on that?
I have my own opinion. I I have my own opinion, but it doesn't matter for any of this.
Alright.
My battery's dead too, just in time.
Yeah, alright, I'm going to go ahead. Is there anyone here to speak on this topic? I'm not seeing anybody. Nobody's waving online. Alright, good. Then I'll open and close the public hearing. And with that, then, I don't, any commissioner reports? I I essentially gave mine by saying we were, I was there last night, but that's it. Alright, item, item number seven.
I move.
Yes.
I'll second.
Alright, boy, how many years has it been? I've got to, I got to teach you guys, right? Move is seconded, I have a roll call, please. Yes.
Commissioner Lamb.
Yes.
Randy, you're probably on mute.
No, oh, hang on. No, I'm on, I'm on, I'm on.
Randy, can you see his monitor? Is he on the monitor still?
I'm on, I'm on.
For sake of the record, Randy, if you could just type in the chat if you vote.
Yes, I don't know what, I don't know what happened there.
You can hear me because we can't hear you.
I am. That's what's exactly. I'm here, I'm here.
Yes. Commissioner Narnes.
Yes.
Thank you.
You want to, do you want? Alright, alright, then we're done. Thank you. We'll see you next time.
You look good in a jacket.
Oh, yeah, yeah, you know, I I tried to.